This will allow me to open up with a stock for Allah. Dear Sheikh Zulu, dear Sheikh Sufi Ba, may Allah raise this station, may Allah protect our shape and its color. Continue to protect our daughter. Ya Allah, may you open our hearts and ears, Ya Allah to receive knowledge, Robbi inni. Robbi stock for Allah. Robbies in the ill, Robbies in the ill, Robbies in the ill, stock for Allah. And again, yes Allah, you give us for our sins known unknown. You made it yet to be committed and everything in between. We thank you Allah. We love you, we praise you Allah, we thank you, stock for Allah. Wudhu bilah min shi'tan regime laha Allah, wa la quwwata la bilah wahwa, laliyadi, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alamin, rahmanirrahim, alaikum adzim. Iya kana abu duwaya, kana stahin, itina sirat al mustaqim. Sirat al adzina, namta alaihim, ga'ir al ma'dubi alaihim, wala doobee. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahumma sali wasanewa barika la sayyidina wa manana Muhammadin. Alaihi wasa'bihi, wa takab'al menili wa jikal karimi, kalita ibanalekabiyastakfurlabihi. Stock for Allah, adim wa tuh. Ilaihim in zawaharin wa mingayu. Stock for Allah, adim wa tuh. Ilaihim in zawaharin wa mingayu. So out to ub aki wa jililahi, makfirid tan menjumla til manahi. Tuk tula hu menjumla til sega iri. Ma al kabaa iri wa min damaa iri. Ta fir lik fir kulimata kadama wa mata akara wa ma benahuma. Wa himni al ilma wa zinni ilma wa amalan wa daban wa fama. Abi alik shifir ulu manafiyah wa jalayati mencha ka imaniyah. Ikshifriyah alisra wa wa'wa midah. Ya kairaman ka shefa seranga midah. Lijmaajamaya ma tafara kalada, katimina kariwa sa'fil kalada. Bi kulada tafaqudala zamaya. Abibi kuwa ta siman kalamiyah. Abliyah ya'a kuwa mufitlawa. Kairan kati raminka walalawa. Barikliyah la humafiyah yati. Wa jafuadi watinala yati. Abliyah ka'ani beshra klima niyah tuh. Bolitwa hirabin may al gayu. Ke'bulanakunubihita ira mina'zanubi wa ma'asi wa ra'fati wa talakula jana talati. U ida mutakumbi rahmatika. Ya rahmanu ya rahimu, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Abibi may ashrahu la sana karfaja'a, bijaya yata li'manallahi kalaja'a. Abibi may ashrahu la sana karfaja'a, bijaya yata li'manallahi kalaja'a. Didi rabbin karimi la shari kalahu, wa sariayo ma'nu ran ta tiya mala'a. Amadun salawat la ifiyabadiina lehi fi isbihi kulibihika la'a. Tuhu ilai laadiya ma'muwa ibu lijumata kaki ma'itaru man bura'a. Jey tujla awman karmanita krima adiwa kulimila gan biriyah. Rahmanu wa bijami alka'ki ra'mata manu niyanis shari man Quran u kura'a. Utumata Mustafaan kulima sedati muta'milka kaya menja du'um bida'a. Ya malaka muqiyah menjalahan kwaadi nehem jumiya war ya hadi ya bida'a. Ya malaka muqiyah menjalahan kwaadi nehem jumiya war ya hadi ya bida'a. Ya malaka muqiyah menjalahan kwaadi nehem jumiya war ya hadi ya bida'a. Hou ta ma'akana ha'ul kavamin darari niyaya yata li'manallahi kalaja'a. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, salatu fati one time insha'allah. Bismillah, Allahumma sali la sayyina Muhammad. Alfatihiri ma'ublika, ulkati miiri ma'sabaka. Na sirilaki belaki walhadi illa sirat ikal mustaqim, ma'ala alihi, akakadrihi. Wa alnigda'riyadi, bismillahirrahmanirrahim, salatu tanjina. Allahumma sali la sayyidina Muhammad, wa la ali sayyidina Muhammad. Salatan tanjina nabiha, minja milah wa ali wa la faa. Watakdi la nabiha jamil hajat. Tutu heru nabiha min jumi seyyaat. Ta fau nabiha inda kaya la darajat. Watu baliqa nabiha axalgayat, min jamil kairat fi'lehaya obadaa ma'mad. Kafaya ainso. Kafaya ainso. Kafaya ainso. Kufitu kuladiradiyayla hu, bisirirai laha ilalahu. Abli muradiyayakama'awahu, bisirirai laha ilalahu. Ya siriyalusra, kama'awahu, bisirirai laha ilalahu. Salatan mu'min bi, sala'mallah, bisirirai laha ilalahu. Stock for Allah, nabi Mustafi lahu, salibi la ilaha ilalahu. Salatan mu'min bi, sala'mallah, bisirirai laha ilalahu. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, salatu bi'kar bilizati mayasi fun. Salaamun ala merzaleen. Alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alamin. Barkay shekibu faa. 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 Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. We begin by reading first chapter. A poem from our beloved Sheikh Sufi Ba called "The Reflection of Perfection," inshallah. And we'll do another seven barkay shekibu faas, inshallah. Barkay shekibu faa, barkay shekibu faa, barkay shekibu faa, barkay shekibu faa. Barkay shekibu faa, barkay shekibu faa, barkay shekibu faa. Ancient Shaolin Daoist Taoist priests in Timberlands. Bismillah. Tibetan tantric Buddhist monk with a cellphone. West African Sufi shaman with a hundred and twenty-nine talismans. I am a long, long, long way from home. Reflection of perfection. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no shaytan, gin, or evil plots of wicked men. Immortal being of light from beyond the seventh heaven, I will never die. Walking on sunshine above the clouds, the sky is my sofa. Call on Allah or call on the Rahman, ya Rahman, la ilaha ilalaa. Words of power from beyond the matrix of the mind. Set souls free to travel higher planes of existence beyond time. Between the inhale and exhale exists a place of infinite bliss. Oneness with the all, ah, ice, water, steam are exactly the same thing. Body, soul, spirit, Allah, one. Allah had as samad. Remove the facade of multiplicity. We exist in a holographic universe where the part contains the whole. The wave contains the ocean. It's not the glass of water from the ocean, the ocean? Stock for Allah. You are love, Allah. Reflection of perfection. Light rays from the sun are manifestations of the essence of the sun. You and Allah are one. You are the one. You are waiting on to come, wake up from the deep sleep of mediocrity. You are not manifesting God as a form of hypocrisy. A butterfly has its roots in a caterpillar. Rough ashlar to a smooth ashlar. This perfect statue exists inside of a raw block of uncarved stone. The reflection of perfection is still perfection. La ilaha ilalaa, Muhammadu Rasulullah, alaikum salam, bismillah. Assalamualaikum matula wa nuw. Into the beloved family, how are we this evening, inshallah?
Bismillah, all is well. Oh, well.
Alhamdulillah. Did anyone have any comments on what was read thus far? Or any insights to these bars that the Sheikh was dropping? Inshallah. Reflection of perfection. I mean, if not, we will continue.
The part where it says, words of power, bismillah. The parts where it says, words of power beyond the matrix of the mind, that stuck out to me.
Hmm. Beyond the matrix of the mind. Nah, Sheikh was dropping bars, alhamdulillah. The great Sufi master from Moors, Spain, Ibn Arabi said, Allah sent himself to himself with himself. What does it mean to be made in the image of God? A perfect artist paints a perfect painting. Allah is perfect and so are all of her creations. You are not the mind, body, or your emotions. When thine eye becomes single, your whole being will be full of light. You have never known your true self. You exist in a fragmented multiplicity of many false selves. One self for your job, one self for the nightclub, one self for your spouse, another self for your children, and yet another self for friends and family. Who are you? In reality, you are who? In the Egyptian pyramid story of Osiris, his body was cut into thirteen pieces. His wife, Aset, collected the thirteen parts and made his body whole again. This is symbolic of your many different false personalities and the need for you to become one. In the Bible, it says, if thine eye becomes single, thy whole body will be full of light. When light shines through a prism, it forms seven rays. Your true essence is the light of God before entering into the prism of your physical body and localized consciousness of an individual false eye. There is a way to overcome this illusion. The path has many names in many different countries. In West Africa, it is called Sufism, the path of perfection through love. Alhamdulillah. Bismillah, has anyone present been able to dive into this book at all? I'm not sure. Everyone's, how long everyone's been with the Sheikh? Everyone that's here at this moment. Besides Sheikh Sharad, stock for Allah. Yes, alhamdulillah, this is the manual. This is the only word I have for this particular book. This is the manual for our path, especially here in the West. This text is coming from the Sheikh of our Sheikh, Sheikh Abdullah Fami, who our Sheikh, Sheikh Sufi Ba helped to translate and put into English for us to read in this time. And time to come, inshallah. So this, that's everything that we need pertaining Iman by Tauhid, Islam by Fiqh, and Isan by Tassuf, inshallah. We may skip over some things, but we'll try our best to touch on everything, and if anybody has any questions specifically, please do not hesitate to interrupt, inshallah. And we can get a discussion going on any, anything you may be wondering, have a concern about, inshallah. Bismillah, we'll start. Iman Islam Isan. Wudhu bilah min shi'tan regime laha Allah, wa la quwwata la bilah wahwa, laliyadi, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. This is getting ready to go into some history of Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba, so I appreciate our beloved Sheikh sincere speaking again the other day and reminding us to just contemplating the station of our Sheikh, just contemplating the station of Kadeem Rasul, inshallah, can raise one station. So we pray that this information is beneficial to all of us, inshallah, bismillah. Let not my being from the black race keep you from reading my books, because the black skin does not cause foolishness or misunderstanding. Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba introduction, this stock for Allah, that was a quote from Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba in the Mazalik Al Jalal. Bismillah. This book is a compilation and synthesis of the teachings of Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba, who also has the station Kadeem Rasul, servant of the Prophet. Serene Tuba, master of Tuba, and Serene Tuba that have been gathered from a variety of his works, stock for Allah. This is an introduction to his writings and the beginning lessons for initiation upon his pathway. Kadeem Rasul explains three pillars of the moral way. Moradism as faith in the oneness of Allah. Iman by Tauhid, submission to the recommendation of Islam by Fiqh, stock for Allah. Read that again. Kadeem Rasul explains the three pillars of the moral way. Moradism as faith in the oneness of Allah. Iman by Tauhid, submission to the recommendation of Islam. Islam by Fiqh, and perfection through initiation. Isan by Tassuf. The finality of this path, three-fold path, is wusul Allah, the union with Allah. Umar Ibn Al Katab said, as we sat one day with the messenger, Allah bless him, and peace of man in pure white clothing and jet black hair came to us without a trace traveling upon him. Though none of us knew him, he sat down before the Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, bracing his knees against his, resting his hands on his legs, and said, Muhammad, peace be upon him, tell me about Islam. The messenger of Allah, Allah bless him and given peace, said, Islam is to testify that there is no God but Allah, and that Muhammad, peace be upon him, is the messenger of Allah. And to perform the prayer, gives a khat fast in Ramadan and perform the pilgrimage to the house if we can find a way. He said, you have spoken the truth, and we were surprised that he should ask and then confirm the answer. Then he said, tell me about the true faith, Iman, and the Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, answered. It is to believe in Allah, his angels, his inspired books, his messengers, the last day, and in destiny, it's good and evil. You have spoken the truth, he said. Now tell me about the perfection of faith, Isan. And the Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, answered, it is to worship Allah as if you see him, and if you see him not, he nevertheless sees you. He said, now tell me about the hour. The Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, answered, the one who was asked about it does know no more than the questioner. He said, then tell me about its signs. The Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, answered, that a slave girl shall give birth to her mistress, and that you should, and that you see barefoot naked destitute shepherds vying to build tall buildings. Then the visitor left. I waited a long time, and the Prophet, Allah bless him and given peace, said to me, do you know Umar who the questioner was? And I replied, Allah and his messengers know best, Allah and his messenger know best. He said, it was Jabril, Gabriel, who came to teach you your religion. Tauhid Muslim 137, Hadith 8, bismillah. That was the Hadith of Jabril. If this was the first time anyone hearing this, describing our path, describing Islam, Iman, and Isan. Straight from the Pasee Salawat, His Holom's mouth, inshallah. The, mashallah, the origin of the path of Kadeem Rasul begins during the time of the Hijra of the Prophet, peace be upon him. And it still exists today. It is the esoteric path of Muslim, Mu'min, and Musan, wherever they may be. Remember those terms, we may ask later, inshallah. The path came into West Africa through the teachings of Sheikh Abdul Kadir Jalani, Sheikh Abu Hassan Shatali, and Sheikh Ahmad Tijani. May Allah be pleased with all of them. In the beginning of this way, Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba mastered all available knowledge of Tauhid, Fiqh, and Nikita, and even Arabic, Arab literature. He was also proficient in grammar and very poetic in his expressions. He wrote books on various subjects in poetic forms so that it would be easy for students to comprehend and memorize. His spiritual quest took him to Mauritania, where the masters of Qadr'a, Shatalia, and Tajani were located. He met all of the masters from the three major Sufi orders in Africa and took the weirds and secrets from each of the masters. He was never satisfied in his quest. So he asked Allah to give him complete perfection of Iman, Islam, and Isan. The perfection of Imam is certainty, or Yaqeen. The perfection of Islam is witnessing, or Mus Shahada. The perfection of Isan is junction, or Wusul. These stations can only be reached by facing hard trials and overcoming enemies. Because of this, Allah allowed the French to send him into exile in extremely difficult conditions. At the time, Senegal was a French colony, and only thirty percent of the population was Muslim. The French forced the people to obey and collaborate with the administration. They used all kinds of strategies to control the country, just as they had done in all of the other colonies. When they tried to force Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba to collaborate like all of the other religious guides, Narabauts, they were called, he expressed that he does not obey any other than Allah and the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. His confrontation with the colonialists is related in the biographic book written in French by Omar Ba, archivist who produced many documents and reports. The book is entitled Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba found to find the tour de moradism. There is also a book on this topic, written in English by Sheikh Stock for Allah, Serene Mustafa Mbaki, entitled "The Trilateral Conspiracy", which has just been reprinted, a stock for Allah. During his exile, Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba attained gifts, the blessings from Allah. After we get through this exile, we're gonna open up for some questions, inshallah. During his exile, Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba obtained gifts and blessings from Allah and the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, that had never been obtained by anyone before him. Yet, he actually obtained more than what he sought. In one of his letters, he wrote, all humans should know that Allah gave his beloved friend, the servant of his prophet, peace be upon him, the weirds of the Qadr'a, Shatalia, and Tajani's secrets. Stock for Allah, the secrets of the Quran, the inner meaning of the Hadiths, and all theological knowledge. Allah has put benediction in my teachings. In the Qasad entitled, "Woyaklaku Malan Ta'alamoon", and he created what you do not know, Kadeem Rasul wrote. You gave me the inheritance of the Fiqh of Imam Malik, made the agreement of Allah be upon him. You gave me the subtle gifts, and you made me the inheritor of the Fiqh of Abu Hanifa. You gave me the inheritance of the Fiqh of Imam Shafi and all benefits. O best guide who deserve honor. You gave me the Fiqh of Imam Ahmad Ibn Hanbal. You gave me that which made Jalani have supremacy, such that the agreement of Allah is upon him. Stop right there. We just named four important people on the path of Islam, inshallah. From this reading, does anybody have a comment on what this means to you when reading or hearing a Qasad by Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba?
Bismillah.
I mean.
Stock for Allah. Um, is it possible we could kind of get some context as far as those particular names that were mentioned?
Stock for Allah. Alhamdulillah. The four names mentioned are the four major scholars of Islam where the four major paths of Fiqh, jurisprudence, are taken from. So along the line, somewhere, somebody said, we want to practice our Islam like this. And another said, we want to practice our Islam maybe like this, that's acceptable. So there, over the years, there've been, the scholars have debated over many things, as far as Hadiths, the Fiqh of Islam, our jurisprudence, is things such as how to make the wudu, when to give the Sukkot, how to make a gushu, or when to make a gushu, how to pray the Salat, the basics of Islam, how to marry. The dowry, how to give a dowry, what is a dowry, things of that nature, and so much more. The rules of divorce. Again, all of these things may have slight alterations from the school of Maliki Fiqh, from the school of Hanifa, Abu Hanifa. Our path is from the Maliki Fiqh school.
I mean.
Well, from that, I'll just say, when the Sheikh says, Allah has put benediction in my teachings, and in so many of the teachings, he's asking and thanking Allah for the blessings of those great scholars, masters, prophets before him, angels, and light beings all before him. So when I hear that, or when I hear him specifying these particular names, and he went on to mention Sheikh Jalani, Abu Hassan Shatali, Ahmad Tajani, that he's pretty much saying that I've covered all the secrets, all these secrets, information, the metaphysics is in my writings. You can find all of what you need in just the Qasad from Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba. The Sheikh has stated and quoted many times that just, the Qasad from Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba could be a Sheikh in itself, if we spend enough time with it and allow it to speak and teach to us, inshallah. So I pick up where he says, you gave me the wonderful gifts of Abu Hassan Shatali by his service for the Prophet, his old grandfather. You allowed me to achieve my excellency by giving me the gifts of Ahmad Tajani and a lot of other wonderful gifts. Kadeem Rasul said, the knowledge of the student comes from the knowledge of the scholars, which came from the knowledge of the prophets. The knowledge of the prophets comes from the knowledge of the angels. The knowledge of the angels comes from the hidden tablet, the lahu makfus. The knowledge of the hidden tablet comes from the omniscience of Allah. And the omniscience of Allah has no form, beginning, or ending. Bismillah, he said that they only know from his omniscience what he permits. Allah knows everything. Allah knows, and you know not. After seven years and eight months, Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba came back to Senegal with the most astonishing esoteric teachings that have ever been written before. This is just a brief commentary on the Sheikh during his first exile and what took place. The Sheikh has said that they thought they were taking him as a prisoner, when indeed they were truly doing the work of Allah. So many stories of the Sheikh on that first exile, traveling to Gabon. The most maybe noted or most prominent story that we hear is the prayer on the water, when the French did not allow him to make his prayers on time. They said, you'd be disrespecting us, because we don't, we don't believe what you believe in, so you can't make prayer on our ship. And Sheikh said, aha, aha. And made his prayers on the ocean, inshallah. Alhamdulillah, stock for Allah. And then went back onto the boat and continued the journey. So many stories from the French, that the French have documented. And we're thankful to be hearing about them in this lifetime, inshallah. Let me see. We'll read this on the second exile, and then it'll begin with Iman Islam Isan. We'll open up and we'll ask if our, assalamualaikum beloved Sheikh Jalloh, we'll see if he has any gems to add to the text, inshallah, from his books. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. All kinds of knowledge are in the poetry and prose of Sheikh Ahmed Ubamba, such as Tauhid, Fiqh, Akita, Tassuf, Adab. Adab is the manners and character, grammar, commentaries on the Quran, commentaries on Hadiths, and laudations of the Prophet, peace be upon him. Kadeem Rasul was sent to a second exile to Mauritania with the most powerful Ulama of the Aulia of Arab descent, where during the fourteenth century of Hijra, stock for Allah, during the fourteenth century of Hijra, nineteenth and beginning of the twentieth century, all of the scholars and masters of the Qadr'a, Shatali, and Tajani, Tariqas recognized him as the Katub of this time period, and came to him to get blessings from his gifts now. of this time period and came to him to get blessings from his gifts. Now, to bring context to this, after the Sheikh returned from his first exile, he had amassed many followers as he was not expected to return. The French were getting rid of all marabouts, religious scholars, leaders, as much as possible during that time period. And when they took the Sheikh, they immediately knew he was different. When they took him to the, where, where he arrived to the court where Sheikh Ibrahim, when he fi- when he did finally answer their summons, he came on his own time and terms and proceeded to mix a lot in the courtroom in front of the judge and his constituents. And stated that, "You have no power or jurisdiction over me. I am Allah's and Allah's only, and I do only His bidding, and the Prophet Muhammad's, peace be upon him." Again, contemplating the station. Some of us won't go to court for a speeding ticket. And the Sheikh knew that these people were ready to take his life by any means necessary. I'm gonna go, go see them myself. Let's talk for law. So when they, when he returned and had a bigger following than when he left, they had no choice but to try to frame him, lie on him, and create reasons to send him back into exile, get him away from here. He is no good for us. Even his own people when he returned, some did not welcome his return. And were working with the French to get him out of here. We do not want him back. He's too powerful. He, so they said he was going to wage a violent jihad. We know Sheikh Ahmed Ababa was nonviolent all the way. But this was all that they had to use. So, as they sent him on his second exile, thinking that we're going to send him to Mauritania with the Arabs. The Sheikh told us the other days that there was an inferiority complex between the African and the Arab where you say you can take, just take any old, any, any old person off the street who looked like he was an Arab of that time period and dress him up as what looked to be a Sheikh, and people would just come and take bait out with that person, then ask them a single question, but just to dress him up. That's just, that's how much of a complex was over the African mind at that time. And possibly this time is about to stop for law. But he sent the Sheikh, they sent the Sheikh over there, expecting him to have some type of inferiority complex, so that the, the masters in that area were going to you know, just shadow him, just o- overshadow him, and they all announced him as the Khatu and took bait out with him. Alhamdulillah, that is just ring to. There's an Arab book written by fifty-six scholars, poets and Aulia who lived with Kadim Rasool to testify to his supremacy. Fifty-six scholars, poets and Aulia. The book is entitled, "Dewan al-Mauritanian, Fimad Sheikh El-Kadim Said al-Bayadin, Wasudainin Filmagri, The Book of the Mauritanians in Laudation of Sheikh El-Kadim, the Master of Whites and Blacks and the Occident." Bismillah. Authors of this book are the most famous scholars of their time, and the quality of their poetry and prose is one of the best in the literature of the Islamic world. There is an eight-volume compilation of the writings of Kadim Rasool on various topics. Many of his writings are hidden. Serene Sally Hu and Baki, that is Jeff, the fifth Khalifa of the Murids, gave me the authorization in order to translate the teachings of Kadim Rasool into other languages and to write about his life in order to help humanity. He explained to me that Allah blessed Kadim Rasool with the ability to save all of those who were linked to him. He gave me the spiritual and scriptural proof of, proof of this. My task is only to make these teachings available in the best and most accessible form. The difficulty of translating the original teachings from Arabic to another language is evident. It must be understood that it is necessary to master Arabic in order to understand the writing of Kadim Rasool. He wrote in the most pure Arabic. The highest scholars of his time recognized the particu- particularity of the form and even substance of his writing. The meaning of some of his writings can only be explained by Serene Sally Hu and Baki according to, or according to their original inner meaning. The task of translating the writings of Kadim Rasool is very important as it relates to the salvation of humanity. It is necessary to start with the basic teachings, so a series of his writings will be published in French and English. Book is part of a series to introduce the teachings of the path Kadim Rasool. In the future, we plan to publish some major works of the Sheikh in its entirety. Bismillah. Let me take a pause real quick. I'll finish with Sheikh Abdullah Farmi saying, "Bismillah, stuck for law. Some of the works that we plan to publish are Mahaila El-Kadus, Gifts of the Most Holy. It is the best writing on the subject of Tauhid. It is written in poetry and contains six hundred and fifty verses. Mazzalik Al-Jinan is the synthesis of Sufi teachings. That is Jeff Sheikh Jalloh posted that the other day. It contains one thousand five hundred and sixty-three verses of poetry. For the translation of, of this writing in English, I collaborated with Abdullah Sally Hu Sufi, that is Jeff Sheikh Sufi Ba, a disciple of Kadim Rasool from Indianapolis, Indiana, USA, who was teaching English in Senegal at the time. His collaboration was very important in the translation of the text because my English is not the best. We dedicate this work to Serene Sally Hu and Baki, the fifth Khalifa of the Muridism, who was the living reality of this teaching, and to Serene Mortada and Baki, the industrious aesthetics traveler. We pray that Allah is pleased with their works and their disciples. This is also respectfully dedicated to all Muslims who propagate peace and safety among all the nations of the human family. I humbly offer these teachings to my daughter Dunya Khan, who lives far away from me in Malaysia, and all the Khan family who takes care of her now. Know that the teachings of Kadim Rasool are the best gifts for humanity in this day and time. Sincerely, Serene Abdullah Farming, that is Jeff. Sheikh Farming, that is Jeff Sheikh Farming, that is Jeff. Sheikh Farming, pause here. Bismillah. Does anyone have any comments to what was read? Any, um, insight wanted to be add, added, uh, any statements towards or about your experience on the path thus far, Insha Allah. We open the floor for the family. And Sheikh Jalloh, if you have anything to share before we touch on Iman Islam Asan, Insha Allah, please. It's stuck for law.
Masalik Al-Jinnan is, is one of those books that does kind of hit. But there's a, there's another that would be, uh, for who, I would move people to, to pair with it. Because if it, if it wasn't for the person that this particular book is written about, we wouldn't even know about Sheikh Ahmed Ababa, Kadim Rasool. The, the chosen ones within the circle of the Sufi mystics, the Bifall, B- Bifall brother name, Biderba South. And not, not many books hit as hard, right, right, right smack in the heart, like Masalik Al-Jinnan and this book did. The introduction was enough that you could, you could, it expounded upon it and turned it into a whole cookbook for an entire month, just based off of, of what's written about Sheikh Ahmed Ababa and Sheikh Ibrahim and their connection. And about halfway through the, just the introduction, you know, just the introduction, not even the book itself, just the introduction, we, we get to see, uh, coming into being of the very first person in history in this order, to have been called a Murid, and his journey to then become a Murid Sadiq, right? Just like the, the, the book that referenced, uh, first here, Iman Islam Asan, and the path of Murid Sadiq. The path of Murid Sadiq. The path of the Murid Sadiq, and the seven stations of soul. The, the intro starts off. The present work on the Bifall of Senegal was written by a Bifall, and is, is the expression of a spirituality coming from the interior, well-defined by Sheikh Muntaqah Bakay. Sheikh Muntaqah Bakay is a son, it's the son of Sheikh Ahmed Ababa's third son. So Serene Muntaqah, the Caliph in Tuba, right now today, is a son of Sheikh Ahmed Ababa's third son, last living grandson of Sheikh Ahmed Ababa. So, he says, "To know Sheikh Ahmed Ababa, it's imperative to engage in the path of God. Committing to the path of God consists, first of all, turning ones back on this world of illusion and wanting nothing from it. We need to know that we were sent to earth to worship God and nothing else. To worship God, we must obey divine prescriptions and abstain from divine prescriptions by doing our best for the love of God. We must then know what God wants for us and what He does not want for us. And there are many things that the writer could say and that, that he knows, but each time we speak, it must be beneficial for those who listen to it. And among those who listen, there are the, the initiated and the uninitiated. When the uninitiated hear the words, they will say, "These are the words of a foolish person." And when the initiated hear, they will say that these words are those of a heretic. A stock for a lot in all caps. However, whatever we say, the one who turns his back on this world of illusion is the one who knows Sheikh Ahmed Ababa best, and straight out of the mouth of Serene Muntaqah, the current Caliph and last living grandson of Sheikh Ahmed Ababa, Kadim Rasool in Tuba. But to get to the, the Bifall and this, this first Murid and his path and his connection to Ababa to become also the Murid Sadiq, the true Murid, true Murid. A Murid is a conjunction of two Arabic words, right? You have Mu and Irada. So Mu would mean one who is, or one who possesses the, the next incoming Arabic word, right? The next incoming Arabic word is the Arada, which is described as the will, the drive, the volition to reach Allah. So I think it's true and truthful. So, a stock for a lot. For those that might call the Bifall crazy because how they look, or how they dress, or carry themselves, or the fact that they might not make the five palest Allah, call them mad and crazy. If there was a way to write a stock for a line, all caps and Arabic, you best believe I'd be the first one to put that in the book. They don't know what they're missing out on. That's a solid connection between the inner dimensions of the Murid, what the brother just put up, and the inner dimensions of the Bifall. The role we just put up describes exactly the inner dimensions of both of them. Does it, I won't say it, it, it doesn't matter which one, but both of them will take you to Muhammad, peace be upon him, so that he will take you to Allah. He goes on to say something like, for, for many decades to, to describe that, for many decades, the Bifall have been the subject of various studies by anthropologists. They're crazy. Why they being studied by anthropology? And out with the Cartesian mind, specific to the West, our Udu Billak, I mean, I'll show you the origin. Conferring on them from the outset, prejudices about the natives or primitives they were studying, and the natives and primitives in quotation marks, because yeah, they were natives, but they were definitely not primitive at all. He, he does say some Senegalese, although they are in good faith, have also tried to make Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa known by publishing literary works about him. However, most of these authors have made the French colonial archives the basis of their research, and as a result, such works are generally fleshed out with an incredible number of quotations and stories borrowed from the same French colonizers who had no notion whatsoever of Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa and how he represented, or what he represented in the path of Sufism, Tassawuf, that he had taken under the guidance of his illustrious master Sheikh Ahmed Ababa. Then Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa gives them the teaching and a reminder about it, is we don't have, uh, Jasbul Murid, Ilah Hitmati Sheikh, or Jasbul Murid, uh, an exhortation to the Murid to put himself in the service of the saints. Was a Qasah, a poem lit near a book written by Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa. He says, "Sheikh Ibrahim bin Mohammed bin Ahmad bin Habibullah." That was the first time I've read his, his full name. Other than just Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa. Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa. Sheikh Ibrahim bin Mohammed bin Ahmad bin Habibullah. May God, God guide him so that he does honorable action. He is the servant who follows the path rehabilitated, key word, the servant of the path rehabilitated. Pause. That's a whole Deef reference in a couple of sentences. "The best of those in the future will be those who have revived Masuna when it has been laid down." Stocked her alive for paraphrasing, but Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa is the servant who follows the path rehabilitated from that Deef by his illustrious master Sheikh Ahmed Ababa, who is his guide, his door, his enlightened judge, the just, the one who guides the Murids by his wisdom. Of course, Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa clung to the rope of Sheikh Al-Baki, or Al-Baki is a Arabic rendition of Mbaqay in Wolaf. Who in turn, flung to the tradition of the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, the guide in the ocean of wisdom, the shining light that is unique in his time and in this time. So whoever follows him on the straight path will be saved. Whoever follows him on the straight path will be saved. When the Prophet Muhammad would say things of importance that he wanted to have in the eyes of the disciples, he would repeat it three times. Whoever follows him on the straight path will be saved. Whoever turns away from him will be lost. It would therefore not be an exaggeration to say that most of the books devoted to Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa and the Bifalls from this point of view, don't give legitimacy to what they really represent in the field of spirituality in general and Sufism in particular. This particular book, which I'll post a, a link to, he says, "It's not designed to engage in futile debates about right or wrong, what Sheikh Ibrahim Ababa and the Bifall of Senegal, but it's rather about sharing true knowledge that it was taught to us by Sheikh Ahmed Ababa in the itineraries of paradise." Masalik Al-Jinnan, the itineraries is, uh, a collaboration of the text to show you how to do something or get somewhere to paradise. He says, "It will be of no advantage to you a knowledge only learned to be constantly admired and generated, or the one who learned it to repudiate or compete. Knowledge is not that which incites controversy or endless display of its knowledge with presumption, nor is it one that incites quarrels or..." Nor is it one that incites quarrels or futile debates. Knowledge is also not the incredible number of stories and quotes. Nay, it is a light that springs from a pure heart. Require knowledge only for the love of God, the majestic and those you will be blessed forever. Indeed, he who has no reverent fear towards the Lord of the worlds is far from being instructed. Even if you would have mastered all the branches of knowledge in order to be low. How can we talk about Sheikh Ibrahim Fall and the Bifalls without referring to the Holy Quran like he said a little earlier? And people excluding him or the Bifalls from. Being seen as Muslim or even Sufi or even as more excited. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall says that the words of God are not easy to decipher. And like what was just said in this book, Ma'adis La Misun that Sheikh Al Nuwamba wrote in the purest form of Arabic, come and give you the science. At that point in time, there were thirteen forms of Arabic prose being written or Arabic poetry. Sheikh Al Nuwamba mastered all thirteen forms of Arabic prose and poetry. And created a fourteenth one. Based off of the already pre-existing thirteen. Anybody knows about that number fourteen in Islam and the lunar calendar at the beginning of the month, you start to see a little present. On that first night and about thirteen later, one plus thirteen is fourteen, you got a full moon. So he says, the words of God are not easy to decipher. You can sit next, or someone can sit next to you and speak in a language that is foreign to you. And if this language were not translated to you, you wouldn't understand it. And yet the one who is speaking it was created by Allah just like you. So how can one then claim to interpret the words of God and furthermore allow themselves to exclude Sheikh Ibrahim Fall from it? So in this work, they give multiple of laudations and praise and renorations to. Examples that Sheikh Ibrahim Fall left us on how him being the first person in the history of his order to be called a Mordad. So if it wasn't for a Bifall, there wouldn't be any word. Yeah, my Wolaf is a little choppy, but I'm, I'm practicing did, the syllables are kind of similar to the Arabic, some are a little harder and some are a little softer. But Sheikh Ibrahim Fall says. But in English, that means each verse of the Quran has been defined by Sheikh Al Nuwamba in his writings. And as for me, I embodied every verse of the Quran through my actions. So it's crazy. Who's mad and who's match noon? Who in their right mind would talk down about Bifall, let Sheikh Ibrahim Fall with them. Following someone who embodied every verse of the Quran through his actions. Based on how they were defined by Sheikh Al Nuwamba in, in his writings. Knowing that Sheikh Al Nuwamba also mastered thirteen forms of Arabic prose and poetry and. Condensed and created a fourteenth that didn't exist at that time. And Sheikh Ibrahim Fall pretty much just said it in two lines of. Each verse of the Quran has been defined by Sheikh Al Nuwamba in his writings and as for me, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. I embodied every verse of the Quran through my actions. Next sentence, it could have been the whole book. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall was the first to be called Mordad, close book. The Mordad then at that point was considered mad, like crazy Arabic word, uh match noon. Because of his bodily asceticism and actions then unknown to the people. And even to this day, some of the Bifall disciples of Sheikh Ibrahim Fall are misunderstood by a large majority of society, stock room. Recognized by their dreadlocks, their multicolored clothes and sometimes the photo of their spiritual guide, which they wear all other colors around their necks called them. The Bifall are an integral part of the social and cultural landscape of Senegal. And it's strange as it might seem, that nowadays if most people recognize the holiness of Sheikh Ibrahim Fall, they nevertheless have a certain contempt for the Bifall. As if they did not represent his heritage, even if they didn't represent his heritage. They still recognize the holiness of Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. Sheikh Al Nuwamba also says in Masalikul Jinan, some will point the finger at the Sufis by shouting at them and saying, here are the law extremists of our society. Surprisingly, some Senegalese and some Mordads are the one who be heavily criticized, the Bifall, the ones that are first. Written history representative of the first Mordad in history. The attitude of some today was that of them vis a vis Sheikh Ibrahim Fall, as told by Sheikh Musaka in a poem that he wrote. Or all of the Mordad calculated rumors about Sheikh Ibrahim Fall saying that he was mad. So to responses like that. And not necessarily Arabic prose, but in, in Wolaf and Wolafal, which is sometimes a, a. A coming together of Arabic syntax and Wolaf syntax. So you create a whole brand new ciphered and codified language. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall just simply replies to the people who talk all that about him, uh in, in, in not understanding them. Wonder where they don't see their devotion, their love and their work and their service. He just says. I prefer to be mad, crazy and out of society insane in the eyes of God. Which Sheikh Al Nuwamba also backed him up with and added in the itineraries of paradise, he says. I confess that many people of our generation are unaware of the mystical path and thus lose great advantages. They ignore that Sufism takes you straight to the sealed abode of Allah, the great laws. They do not know that this will be the best provision on the day of disillusionment when men are struck with fear. The, the, the unavoidable event. They do not know that this is the best path one can take in the world. They do not know that it bestows righteousness and preserves from evil. Some express an inordinate hatred of Sufism because their hearts are sick. Some perceive it as extremism, exaggeration in faith, acts of piety. People who criticize the Sufis do so because of their laziness. Sheikh Al Nuwamba saying this, not for me. But if it didn't come from Sheikh Al Nuwamba, it didn't come from the Prophet Muhammad in the Quran, though hearing lies truth. Others criticize Sufis severely and turn their backs on the books that even mention it. Because they ignore the wisdom and the good guidance of these servants of God. So if they're unaware of the true benefits contained in Sufism, know that the sun cannot be veiled. Because the blind can't even see it. The darkness of the blind could not hide the light of the full moon on the fourteenth day. Of the lunar calendar. Sheikh Al Nuwamba mastered thirteen different forms of Arabic prose and poetry and created a fourteenth one. That had a light within it that some Arabs at that time could not even. Read and make coherent sense out of church yesterday to them. That could not be ignored because an ant refuses to take it. Did it is Sheikh Sharaw for that, uh feeding the ants and posting the Quran verse in the earlier two was right on time. How could a wise person despise a path whose origin is detachment from worldly goods? And whose end is the attainment of happiness? How could anyone despise a path that contains useful teachings for righteous people? A way that bestows qualities known to prophets, righteous people and saints upon them in quote. That's from Sheikh Al Nuwamba.
I'm gonna act like it's just me and you speaking right now, Insha Allah, but it may, it may be some here who. Are not as familiar with Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. And you just gave a superb and eloquent. Damn near perfect. Description of what a Bifall is. In this time, time before and time to come, Insha Allah. But just to make it plain for those who don't know who Sheikh Ibrahim Fall is. Cause that, that was very Mord if you Sheikh Jalloh, but I got, can I, can I, can I Bifall it real quick? Sheikh Ibrahim Fall was smacking the shit out of folk, stock for law. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall was. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall was smacking folks with a club. To get them in line to Sheikh Sheikh, I believe Sheikh Ibrahim Fall was Sheikh Ahmedu Bamba's thirty ninth disciple. So the Sheikh had disciples. Prior to Sheikh Ibrahim Fall, oh, and the story of Sheikh Ibrahim Fall finding Sheikh Ahmedu Bamba is so beautiful. Alhamdulillah, but just to make it plain before we give, go any further on Sheikh Ibrahim Fall, he was smacking folks. I don't, don't you walk in front of the Sheikh and not bow your head? Don't you try to shake the Sheikh's hand? You better get back. They said that there was no adav and around they. The Sheikh was still letting others lead the prayer. He was so humble, Alhamdulillah. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall came and said, no, 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 no. This is not how we treat the master. So. Just had, I just wanted to bring that little, little nugget of con, to give you context.
He said the thirty ninth disciple. And it took thirty eight for there to be the first Mordad.
I'm not recommending anybody just start smacking people, stock for law. It's not what we're saying. Not saying it, not gonna not say it. What we're saying is. For the, for the sake of Allah, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. Was doing some grand, what some thought downright outlandish awkward things. In order to. Bring people into the understanding of the Hakikat. Hold on Sheikh, you just read. You mentioned Jasbul Mordad, but I'm Insha Allah, I'mma read from Babal Mordad Dean by beloved Shallow Lam Fall. In Philadelphia, Dared Jeff, Brother Shallow. In this picture, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall says, he had a quote, says whoever looks at me with their eyes cannot see me. Whoever meditates about me with their mind cannot comprehend me. Why don't you ask me where I am? I am in the knowing. How many times have we heard from beloved Sheikh Sufi about it? You, we. Stock for law, you see, we don't, we don't get on Sheikh Ibrahim Fall a lot. It's so, i- i- it's. That's a whole Sheikh Ibrahim Fall, they say Sheikh Ibrahim Fall mastered. Thirteen systems of realization, Dared Jeff Sheikh Zulu for teaching this, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall mastered thirty thirteen. Systems of realization and said he. The Bifall, the, a stock for law, she didn't she say that the Sheikh. Had realized thirteen systems of Arabic prose. And combined and made a fourteenth one, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall combined. Thirteen re- systems of realization and created the Bifall path and. He said he couldn't even teach that path to some, some disciples because it was so difficult. So he would only teach out of one of the other thirteen for tho- for, for those who. Could recognize. The Bifall, bi meaning father, fa- fall. Father fall, we'll just leave it there. For now, Insha Allah, but yes, we hope some of us laughed at the seriousness of the statement, cause. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. For lack of better words, Sheikh Ibrahim, he, he the one. He was the one that we wouldn't know about the one. Without a Sheikh Ibrahim Fall door. The Bab, the Babal, the gate. Of Mordism, you said if we can't even get. We can't, we can't walk the path of Mordism without stepping through the gate of Sheikh Ibrahim Fall. Which has been quoted by Sheikh Sufi. We can't walk through the gates, self walk the path of Mordism without walking through the gate that is Sheikh Ibrahim Fall.
It's Arabic, but Bab before is also Babylonian and Persian. But if we, if we go back to, oh, Persian, Barcay or even the Avestin script in spell. Spell fall in that language and then define it from, from that language. That means divination. Defying if he's the one, the father of men, Abraham, many sons, the father of men. Abu Rejal in Arabic is. Sheikh Ibrahim Fall is literally the perfect example of what it needed to be a Mordad Sadiq. Embodied the seven stations of the soul that it takes for a person to reach that pinnacle to become this, this Mordad Sadiq. Couldn't have got to those seven stations of the soul if he didn't go through Iman, Islam and their son. Those three and the five pillars in the middle. In their way, Sheikh Ibrahim Fall gave us a perfect example. So. Just to wrap up on my end, based off the, the example that he gave us and a quote from. Yeah, Seren Abdul Lahad, so son and caliph Sheikh Al Nuwamba. The patchwork and the, the style of dress that the Bifall wear. Is actually attributed to Seren Abdul Ahad. They call that type of dress Bai Lahad, like father or esteemed elder and Lahad from Seren Abdul Lahad. From a portion. Of a, the, that he gave about a portion, talking about a family and a group of people. Who mastered thirteen different forms of Arabic and realization and created a fourteenth one to say. We were African first in a cookbook, in a religious setting, in the mouth, we were African first. Para phrase, don't adopt something outside of who you already are to be a Muslim. If you're already wearing a particular type of kente cloth, if you're already wearing. Galaman with Bifall patchwork and different colors and whatnot on it. And you're still living that, that, that life, that life is still on that path, the path of the Mordad Sadiq. You're still traversing up those seven stations of the soul, those seven chakras, regardless of this Bifall is making five palest alive or not. Sheikh Al Nuwamba says in the itineraries paradise of Masalikul Jinan. Do not think that the favors of God are reserved exclusively for the first and not for the last. You will then be lost. Indeed, it happens that a man living in recent times has favors from Allah, which have not been attributed to his predecessors. And then sometimes people leave out some things like this from Sheikh Ibrahim Fall and how he, he represented and embodied this Mordad Sadiq title. Bamba says the fine drops of water may well precede the torrential downpour rain. However, the superior authority and abundance is to the torrential raining. Not the fine drops of water which preceded it. And then remember this prophetic maxim and uh prophetic maxim is just beside a. And then remember this prophetic maxim and prophetic maxim is just decided they, uh, translate Hadith. So remember the Hadith that says, my community is like the rain. No one knows which is the best. First or the last. Cause this community will.
We have gone past our hour, Alhamdulillah, Stakfala, but we want to share a story or two about Sheikh Ibrahimah. There's so many. I'm just gonna share the ones that the Sheikh has shared publicly, Stakfala. And ones that we've read in the book, but we will, Insha Allah, return next Wednesday. We ask that those who can look through this first, and if you're interested by reading more about Sheikh Ibrahimah, he is in this chapter. The eight principles of the Mordid Siddiq in his book. And, uh, we've touched on that a few times. We have a study guide to go with that. And the video that Sheikh has posted on YouTube, Insha Allah, we can share that again. Uh, we have a a intro study guide for this beginning section on Iman, Islam, Is- Isan as well too, on the basics. Of, uh, an intro to Sufism, Insha Allah. But we, before coming back next week. For those who have not read this book or reviewing it again, myself included, we're gonna go through this first chapter or excuse me, the chapters Iman, Islam, Isan, and I ask that everyone who can create your own study guide. As you come across a question or thing that you think need are important points to know. And you're, whether in your virtual notes or a physical notebook and, uh, come up with one's own study guide as you read through Iman, Islam, Isan. On, you know, again, questions that you come across and the answer that one may need to, uh, crystallize in our conscious and take with us on the path, Insha Allah. There's so much information that Sheikh put in this book about, look, the angels, uh, when we get to the six articles of faith, he tells about how many books were revealed to each prophet. A hundred twenty-four prophets, that they, just so many things that we may hear in some of the teachings that the Sheikh has given. And may not have full knowledge or understanding of it is definitely in this book, Insha Allah, so. We'll suggest that and we'll end with the a story. Two stories from Sheikh Ibrahimah. One, one that I have to share is just how this, the Sheikh has shared with the story that he had a visitor come to see him at one time and he, uh, people were complaining about Sheikh Ibrahimah not making the salat. As Sheikh Jalloh said, the Bifal don't fast during Ramadan, they don't make salat regularly, although Sheikh has talked that there is a sect of Bifal who do make salat. Not many of them, not many groups, but there is a group of Bifal who do make salat. When someone complained about Sheikh Ibrahimah not making the salat. And when the Sheikh told him. He, he gave the order to Sheikh Ibrahimah now to go making, to go make salat. Said the Sheikh Ibrahimah made salat for three days straight. They looked at him and thought he was crazy. He said, why is he, he's, he's still making salat? He hasn't stopped making salat for three days. He was Sheikh Al-Babba told him, stop making salat. He went back to his regular tasks. As if nothing ever stopped, a Stakfala. That is just a quick memorable story that we have of Sheikh Ibrahimah and another one that the Sheikh has shared about the disciples. Were complaining about Sheikh Ibrahimah. They were tired of being smacked. They were tired of being forced to fast. They were just tired of Sheikh Ibrahimah. They were complaining to Sheikh Al-Babba. That they want him to leave. They wanted Sheikh Al-Babba to get rid of Sheikh Ibrahimah or they were going to leave. Dared Jeff Sheikh Sufi Ba, he said, Sheikh Al-Babba told the disciples, no, 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 no. That will be too much for you all to leave. Me and Sheikh Ibrahimah, I'mma take my Sheikh Ibrahimah, we're gonna go and y'all can stay here. So the first time I heard that story, it just highlighted the importance of Sheikh Ibrahimah in this path. The depth, just the depth of a person. Taking realization to a place where, like the Sheikh said, I'd rather a man call me crazy. And be sane in Allah's eyes. So with that, I ask Allah to continue to guide us on his path, protect our Sheikh in his call, will give him victory. Thank Allah for true Sheikh. On this path and this day and time. May continue to bless us with knowledge. Wisdom and understanding of the past. And forgive us of our sins, known, unknown, committed yet to be committed. And all in between, Insha Allah. May we contemplate the station of Sheikh Ibrahimah. And draw closer to him. Insha Allah. And we hope to see everyone next week, seven thirty, and we will continue. Speaking about Iman, Islam, Isan, Insha Allah, and go into the eight principles of the Mordid Siddiq. Assalamualaikum, our new family, Insha Allah, next week. For this dog, we'll see everyone tomorrow morning, Insha Allah, continuous. Our seven AM class, Stakfala, Salaam family.